Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 10th, 2018 Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education meeting. The board has been in executive session discussing legal and personnel matters. May I have a motion to reconvene the public meeting?
So moved.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jeffrey Muster.
(inaudible)
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 So, I would like to start off in the President's report by making a statement regarding recent mention in the press about an administrative hearing taking place in the district. I'll start by saying that we are obligated to protect privacy rights when due process proceedings have been commenced, and therefore, we can't comment on specifics. But we do want the public to know that our actions are guided first and foremost in the interests of student safety and welfare. We are committed to ensuring and protecting the rights of our students, faculty, administrators, and all other staff members. When the district receives concerning information about a student or any district employee, the administration follows through with a thorough investigation. The investigation may reveal information indicating that a hearing is the appropriate course of action. And in following through, every case receives thorough and individual legal analysis. We use legal proceedings only when warranted to address a specific set of circumstances at hand, present circumstances. We move forward with such proceedings only when we believe it is in the best interests of our entire community. Please note, it's important to us to communicate with you on matters of concern to the community, and we will continue to do so to the extent we're allowed, given legal and contractual constraints. Should you have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, and we will answer your questions to the extent we are allowed. Again, student safety and well-being is our first priority, and we will continue to put students first in all that we do. Okay. Next, I would just like to move on. I would just like to talk about the Governor's State of the State address, which took place January 3rd. It's not, it was not an executive budget. He has not gone over the numbers yet, but he just went over some broad ideas, and I just want to say just a few things about what I thought might affect us in the K-12 education category. And there was really not a lot there. I thought the big news there was that he really did not talk a lot, at all, about K-12 education, after having done so to a very large extent last year. So, I personally, I thought that was the big news. He did say that 2018 will be the toughest year in modern political history. He projected $4 billion in deficits, in addition to $2 billion cuts in federal aid to the state. So, that's approximately at least $6 billion in the hold for the state. He referenced the recent federal tax reform, which he called a "federal assault on New York," with the elimination of full deductions of SALT, state, and local taxes. And he said that this alone would cause an increase of 20% to 25% in state income taxes. And I'm talking about all this because, of course, you know, it is going to affect state aid to schools. He mentioned that New York does pay $48 billion more in federal taxes than we get back, and this latest federal tax overhaul will cause New York taxpayers to pay an additional $14 billion more than we get back, on top of the $48 billion. He did not release state aid numbers, but he did talk about ensuring that more aid would be directed to poorer districts. And finally, he talked about something that I found puzzling. He talked about ensuring that local districts are distributing aid to their poorer schools. I don't know to what extent this is relevant to school districts around Westchester. Our six schools are pretty much on par, so that would not apply to us. So, that is the extent to which I thought the State of the State affected us in the K-12 educational world. And I don't know if anyone wants to add anything to that, anyone, the board or administrators, but that was what I picked up on.
Is it okay if I add a little bit? Yes. At some point, I was going to talk about the SALT deduction and the federal tax legislation that was passed in December. So, maybe this is a good time to do that. So, John and I have been talking a lot as we go through the budget development process of the impact of those decisions that, you know, on our taxes and on our community. We understand the possible reduction in home prices that are, many of our community members, they itemize their deductions, so that will impact their disposal income. So, we know that that is something that we need to take under consideration. We also know that the elimination of tax breaks that normally encourage homeownership may impact us as well. So, those are all a part of our conversation as we move forward in the budget development process. And I just want the community to know that we are thinking about that, and we are considering that as we move forward.
Okay. Well, that concluded the President's report. I should have mentioned on the agenda, on item 1.1, we did have a BOSI student recognition set to happen, but the student is unfortunately not feeling well and was not able to be with us. So, hopefully, we can postpone that to the next meeting. I also wanted to say Warren was not able to, Warren Muster was not able to be here with us tonight. So, I'll turn it over again to you, Christine, for the, to complete the superintendent's report.
So, before we begin our presentations this evening, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize, and it's great that Joe Grumando is here, because I want to recognize our custodial staff. There was a tremendous cleanup that needed to take place last week, and we really appreciate their efforts in coming in during that storm to prepare our buildings. Unfortunately, we couldn't open on Friday, but it wasn't because our buildings weren't ready. So, I wanted to thank him and his staff publicly for coming in under those conditions and working as hard as you do to get our buildings ready for our kids and for our faculty. I also want to recognize the efforts of a small group of our staff that were actually in on, I believe it's Monday morning at 1:30 a.m., we had a sprinkler bust in Seven Bridges. So, we had a small group of staff that came right in, including Joe, and worked between 1:30 and 5 o'clock in the morning to make sure that Seven Bridges could open on time. So, those aren't things that we talk about or that are widely communicated throughout the district, but I do want to take the opportunity just to let the board know how amazing our staff is and how they're here when we need them to be, because that could have caused a delay at Seven Bridges on Monday morning, and it didn't have to, because people work through the night. So, we really appreciate them.
Thank you.
On the agenda, you'll notice there are two important personnel issues. The first is, because we've had an increase in our ENL, or English Second Language Learner enrollment, we've had to add a staff member. And we're lucky that we're hiring such a highly qualified teacher to come in and work with our students. But I do want to just make the community aware that we are seeing an increase in our ESL population. The other is, and we'll celebrate this at a different time, but you'll see we have a retirement from one of our well-known and longstanding faculty members here, Patricia Wolf. So, while we're sorry to see her go, we're excited for her and her future, and I believe in June, we do something for our retirees. So, we'll celebrate her at that time. But I did want to acknowledge that. I'd like to thank Josh and his team. We have our new website up. We're still working out the kinks. We appreciate that our community's been really patient, and we also appreciate all the feedback that we've received. I know we're videotaping our meeting tonight, but we can't post it at this point, because it's not ADA compliant. But we are still working on how to meet the federal guidelines with our videos and to be able to post them in the future. So, if at some point someone would like to view what we've taped tonight, they can come to the district office, and we'll help accommodate that in the meantime. I also wanted to mention, because Mr. Block has had some conversations with students, we are looking at putting our high school students on an email platform. That is a district platform, so we're having those conversations right now with student government. So, we'll be talking about that more with the board as we begin to see the feasibility of using that platform with our kids. We think it'll be better for our communication between our faculty and our students.
Would it be on Microsoft Exchange, or would it be on?
It'll be on Google.
Excellent.
So, we'll, but we'll keep you posted. It's just we're at the beginning stages of it. He just met with the student government recently, and he was unable to be here tonight, but I did want to mention that, because that would be a shift for us. And then finally, I would encourage our families and our community of faculty and staff to fill out the thought exchange as to what we are looking for our graduates to be when they leave Greeley, because that's going to help guide our strategic planning process. So, that survey came out at the beginning of this week, but it's also online. So, if you didn't get a chance to open that email out, you can find it on our website. So, I would encourage everyone to engage in that process, because the more input we have from our community, the better we'll be able to serve the community at large and determine our direction moving forward for the district. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Allison, our Roaring Brook principal, and her team.
Good evening. I'm Allison Porcelli. I'm the interim principal of Roaring Brook Elementary School, and I am very proud to be amongst this group of very dedicated and professional teachers tonight who represent the Roaring Brook faculty very well. There's a real energy around learning at Roaring Brook, with adults, with the kids, and we're very excited to share that learning with you tonight. So, we will be presenting, be talking to you about social-emotional learning and innovative instruction, and how they tie together. And so, before we do that, I want to give just a brief snapshot of Roaring Brook learning in the past. In 2015, 2016 school year, Roaring Brook faculty studied growth mindset and looked at the difference between a growth and a fixed mindset, and really looked at the language that they were using with kids, and how their language can promote a growth mindset, and also the dispositional learning that, the dispositions that they want to encourage, such as persistence and perseverance. And that learning, even though it was a few school years ago, is very much alive in the school today. And then last year, like many of the other schools, and you've heard their presentations, Roaring Brook also studied active learning, project-based learning, and innovative spaces. Which brings us to our learning this year, which, as I mentioned, is innovative and social-emotional learning. On opening day of school this year, Dr. Ackerman showed us all, you remember, the video of the 21st century learners and what our world will look like in, I think it was 2025. And one of the things that stood out to us from that video was that many of the jobs don't even exist yet. But what we do know is that it's very important for us to teach our students what it means to be human beings. And skills like empathy, and collaboration, and problem-solving, and creativity are the skills that we feel are really important. So, earlier in the school year, I had an aha moment with one of the teachers. I was visiting the makerspace, and it's, we've come to joke that it's a great problem that we have, that it's hard for teachers to get in there, so they had to create a whole fancy schedule to organize the time. But, so I was in there, and a teacher was very excited about a project-based learning unit that she had planned, and the kids set off, and they had all these beautiful materials, and they were in their groups and ready to work. And of course, what starts to happen is the kids are arguing over the materials, and they're, you know, disagreeing over who's going to do which part of the project. And the teacher and I stood back, and we looked, and we could have taken that moment and felt a little frustrated, but rather than seeing it as a roadblock, a roadblock, we saw it as a real opportunity. And we thought, you know what, this is a really, really great, authentic place to tie these two initiatives together, innovative and social-emotional learning. So, that's what we're going to present to you tonight. We have three groups of teachers who are going to be talking about innovative and social-emotional learning around Roaring Brook, across different grade levels and different spaces. So, Stephanie Candelaft and Andrea Shaver are kindergarten teachers, and they'll be talking about how they use play to teach into social-emotional learning. And play is young children's first experience with the design process. It naturally happens inherently as kids are building with blocks. They'll naturally ask the question, wait, how can I make this block structure the biggest, tallest structure I can make? And as they're trying to build it, they'll, you know, try it one way, try another way, and eventually, they'll come to realize after it falls down a number of times that they have to build a sturdy base first before they can stack, otherwise, it won't work. And there's a lot of social-emotional learning that goes into that. So, Andrea and Stephanie will be talking to us about that. Bracken Feldman, our art teacher, and Susan Diskin, our second, one of our second-grade teachers, will be talking about a collaborative, project-based learning unit in the content area, social studies, that they worked on in the makerspace, and some of the social-emotional learning skills that they taught into. And then Olga Chusa is here from 4th grade, and she will be talking to us about how she and her students utilize the design process to take on some social action around our school, and they formed some empathy clubs. So, I will turn it over to the teachers, because they are the star of this presentation.
So, I think it would be helpful to start by defining what is social-emotional learning. Social-emotional learning is teaching children the skills necessary to self-regulate their own emotions and to interact positively both with peers and adults. Without first teaching social-emotional skills, children will not be able to successfully engage in innovative teaching practices such as those in the makerspace. Keep in mind that kindergarteners are brand-new people, some of whom have only been on the planet for four years when they come to us at Roaring Brook. In order for these young people to be able to fully access our rigorous academic curriculum, they need to be taught social-emotional skills. When children know how to communicate and collaborate respectfully with one another, they're able to plan, compromise, and implement their ideas. At Roaring Brook, our school motto, which is the acronym PRIDE, incorporates aspects of social-emotional learning. During center time, we provide the children with a variety of materials so that they can envision, plan, and implement their own ideas. To stock our classroom makerspace, the children brought in recycled materials and organized those materials, as you can see in the center photo. It is only when we give students the opportunity to engage in open-ended exploration that they're able to transfer and apply the social-emotional skills that they have learned throughout the day. One only needs to observe what occurs in a typical day in the block area or the makerspace to witness the incredible brainstorming, planning, negotiating, collaborating, problem-solving, and implementation of plans that kindergartners are capable of.
In order for students to be involved in innovative and collaborative learning, students first need to learn how to be active participants of a group, make connections to others, perspective take, and share their thinking with others. Through giving children these opportunities to explore, act on their curiosity, and use their imaginations, we are allowing them to develop the foundational skills for creative thinking, problem-solving, risk-taking, and innovative thinking. One activity that we incorporate into our daily schedule to build the skills necessary for this type of learning is called a community circle. This is a time and place where students are engaged in meaningful and open-ended social and academic conversations, where they can practice ways to express their thoughts, opinions, and ideas openly and honestly. They also learn how to ask questions to gather more information and respectfully disagree with others. These are skills that are then transferred and applied during center-based play. As we learned from George McCloskey during our staff development day, the prefrontal cortex is where executive functioning is all developed. So, we need to provide our children with these opportunities to develop that prefrontal cortex in order to teach them strategies to become more independent thinkers. At the kindergarten level, we work with students to create an environment where they're constantly navigating socially in order to support the meaningful inquiry and exploration that occurs across the day. So, when students are given the opportunity to work together, they've been to, they begin to apply these self-awareness skills to collaborative learning through planning and assigning roles and creating products together. So, here we have students that are using materials from Reader's Workshop during center play as they recreate some of their emergent storybooks. Having a flexible mindset during these activities is extremely important as students negotiate their roles and turn-taking. There's a lot of hidden curriculum going on here, as the students are remembering what good storytellers do and giving each other helpful feedback on ways to act out the stories. These are also skills that are transferred and applied when working through academic challenges and social challenges throughout the day. So, here we have a video that demonstrates the way students work together to create a group plan, build their structures according to the plan, and participate in some compromising and problem-solving skills along the way. This video really demonstrates the way that we're building the foundational skills for students to work collaboratively through divergent thinking throughout the day as they're faced with challenges in both social-emotional scenarios and when academic challenges arise as well.
We're gonna like, put the blocks like this. We are like, can I look through that?
So, Ava and Alexa, what did you do first here?
We dropped what we want to do, and now we're gonna build what we want to do.
So, did you work together?
Yeah.
We're gonna attach everything together so we can.
Yeah. We're gonna use a little bit of her idea and a little bit of my idea.
Oh, did you guys compromise on that?
Yes.
Oh, so I see that you both drew on each side of the planning page.
Yeah.
So, what are your next steps?
We're going to like, build like, oh, please. We're going to build like, a tower.
We put something around it.
A tower with something around it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm gonna check back in with you guys in a little bit.
So, as you can see, they're working on their compromising skills, and these are skills that will truly set them up to be successful when they get into areas like the makerspace in our building. And we go into, next week, when we work with the coding, with the B-bots, these are definitely skills that set that foundation. So, these are slides that are indicative of how fostering this growth mindset will enable our students to work cooperatively and problem-solve, and they're demonstrating resilience and perseverance through challenging tasks. So, this next slide shows how our students became very interested in the Rockefeller tree lighting this year. So, we read some books about New York City and discussed the challenges that would go into bringing this, such a large tree into the middle of such a busy, crowded city. We showed the video of the tree going through, and the students were amazed and talked about how there's so many people there, and the streets are so narrow. So, they really worked hard to recreate this event in our block area. So, through drafting, trial and error, several discussions, and rebuilding, we successfully brought the tree into the center of the busy and crowded city after they drew warning signs and shut down streets. And we were able to do it without cutting the tree in half, which was the original idea for the plan.
When we received new Cubbies this year, the children were thrilled when we asked the custodian to save the giant boxes they came in. They brainstormed ideas about what to create with the box, voted on which idea to implement, made plans, and ended up creating the rabbit burrow you see here on the top left. Each day in the dramatic play area, the children need to decide on a theme and assign roles and come up with solutions when someone does not want to be the babysitter again. Psychologist Lev Vygotsky stated that "learning is based on social construction through collaboration with others." This social construction can only take place within the scaffolding of direct teaching of social-emotional skills. The first video you see on the left was taken in our classroom makerspace during center time. In it, you'll see an example of a kindergartner who demonstrates perseverance.
What's that, what are you gonna do?
When I start bringing this home, I can drop my model, figure, string with this top pole, and it will come sliding down and come out right here, and land in here.
So, is that what you were planning on making when you first started working here?
Yes.
Did you have to change your design while you were working?
No. I kept trying and trying until it was like this.
So, this child worked on his project for over an hour. At one point, he realized he was unable to complete one part of his project design. This was an opportunity for me to remind him that sometimes we need to enlist the help of others, which he did. He asked if anyone was an expert on cutting out squares, and several children offered to be that expert. In the second video, you'll see a child who worked on a self-initiated project for two days in our classroom makerspace.
It's going good right now again.
It's going good?
It's going good again, but it hard when B2 into the A card.
I did it that time, but today it won't.
Why do you think it worked last time, but not this time?
Because, I don't know.
Is there something different about the materials you're using?
No.
Do you push it?
It's not. I'm not a head farmer.
He demonstrated resilience and perseverance, and as you heard, I helped him practice reflecting on the progress of his project when I asked him why he thought he was able to attach the tubes the previous day, but not that particular day. So, as you can see, all of this social-emotional growth is very hard work. It's exhausting.
So, this evening, we're going to share with you a project that we have been doing together collaboratively in the makerspace. The work we've been doing was driven by the excitement around the makerspace, as well as the work we've been doing to nurture a safe environment where students demonstrate a growth mindset, empathy, respect, intentional kindness through authentic learning. Allison? Sorry. I was so amazed, why don't you keep? We started by having a conversation about how the makerspace can guide the social-emotional work going on in the classroom. During a planning session, we started the conversation by looking at the second-grade curriculum. And then I observed the students drawing a social studies lesson on a different, of different types of communities. With support from Sue, I developed a lesson plan based around the students creating Thanksgiving Day Parade floats to travel through downtown Chappaqua. Here's an example. Here's an example, yep. And then we're just gonna play a little bit of an example for you, that's all.
Go ahead, Katie.
Let it start.
Okay, okay.
So, in the classroom, the children have been studying their suburban community in Chappaqua, as well as mapping skills. As stated in our first slide, the mission presented to them was to design a float for the parade. So, first, we start with the development and the planning stage, where we sat one morning, we put the children into small groups. We had five different groups of children, and we really looked at who they were and their personalities and their strengths. And the challenge was presented to them, and before we even got to making our B-bots, we talked about designs. So, the children had to go through the first process of designing their ideas for a parade. So, they had to talk to each other and share their different ideas and think about what their parade might look like. Some people wanted a football stadium on top of their float, others wanted a family celebrating Thanksgiving, some children wanted a Thanksgiving feast scene. So, after they were introduced to the B-bots, and they sat down, and you can see the last slide, the boy that Eric, he's practicing program coding with the B-bot to go in different directions. Then they had to store the makerspace to find different supplies that they thought that they could use to make their B-bot parade float. So, then after that, the children got busy working on making their float. They had to do some negotiations, had to make some negotiations along the way, and that's what Allison was referring to, the work, the observations that were made about the children having to navigate. They worked through this over three different sessions. So, in the collaboration process, we involved Diane Wendell and Chris Item to help collaborate with their expertise in, you know, bringing in how we're coding the B-bots and traveling them along with mats. Diane also incorporated going through the village of downtown Chappaqua so that the kids could use Google Earth to find the facades of the storefronts and sketch out the facades to take them down.
to take them down to the B-bot mats so that the kids could create their own parade routes for the floats to travel through.
And here are some pictures of the children after they made their storefront pictures. They were taped down, and they had to figure out where that they wanted to place them. So they had to think about, where was Bell School in relationship to Starbucks or the rec center in order to program their B-bot? So you can see them there trying out some of their little floats on their mats.
During this process, the students also discovered that the B-bot couldn't quite tow the weight that they were thinking it could. And we had to make some quick adjustments. The students would not only work with their groups, talking about the different ideas, but they would wander around the classroom to do a little gallery walk to see what their classmates had going on. And each project was dramatically different. And students would go back and make adaptations to their projects to help the B-bot be towed, to help their parade float be towed by the B-bot. This is just a little lead-up to the video. Devon, one of the students, is talking about her reflection at the end of the process. So we're just going to play right here.
The thought our B-bot float was going to go on top of the helmet, and Callie also thought that. And then we had, and then we saw other people towing their B-bot, so we said that we should do that too.
So as we were working through our sessions, we noticed that we needed to do more teaching into giving positive feedback to the students. And so we did hear a lot of really positive feedback after we had worked on giving feedback in the classroom in different activities, cooperative learning, working with reading partners or writing partners. The children really got to be much more proficient at providing feedback to their friends that they were in groups with. And we were able to observe kids saying things like, "I like your idea." "Have you thought about, I think we should try this?" So the kids were using the language that we had developed in the classroom. This is, these are two charts here. One is providing feedback to your partners in a very positive, respectful manner. And the other one, the other chart, is talking about kindness, what kindness looks like to my second graders.
So this video will just show a brief little glimpse of the final product, and some students, I believe, are talking about how they revised and went through the process. It might be hard to hear them because there's noise going on. Nice. So let's, so I have one question for this group. Yeah, it's just the map, but it is moving, right, Faris?
And you were also pushing it.
So I have one question.
They were very into making their floats very big, and then they realized, big didn't make it better. And then there was a group of 14 that realized that they could hook up their float to their B-bot, and all of a sudden, everybody wanted to do that. But then they really need to customize their float, so actually did pull the float. Because they're pretty heavy floats, but the kids were able to manage to figure out how to make their floats actually go through the parade route. They were very successful.
So when Sue and I originally thought about this project, we borrowed some B-bot helmets, and they're just simple things. And we just kept thinking, the kids will just build on top of this, and this will become their float, and it will drive. And what really ignited Sue and I in our exciting process here was that the kids explored with the B-bot by looking to see that there's a tow hitch and started revising, coming up with new ideas and new concepts. And you can see the student in the middle, Serena, she, her group, just did it right on top of the helmet. And they kept looking around, and they're like, well, ours move so easily. And, you know, just seeing, that helped to have the kids have conversations about how things can be light and move around and easily on the mats.
So collaborating together, we learned a lot about how children work well together and providing feedback. That we're going to move on to another project where the children are going to be making Marionette animal puppets, because we're presently in a nonfiction reading and writing unit. So that's going to be our collaborative project.
Good evening, everyone. As you've been hearing from our teachers, emotions matter. Before any real learning can occur, children need to feel safe, they need to feel calm, they need to feel comfortable enough to take risks. And that's why social-emotional learning, I believe, is just as important as academic skills. And I'd like to thank Erin and Allison for supporting us in that important movement and that work we're doing. So last year, my students in fourth grade began reading some articles about bullying in the beginning of the year. They were quite shocked about what they read, and they decided to take some action to raise awareness against bullying. And that became the Choose Kindness campaign. We were very fortunate to have Mr. Phil Imperial, a parent volunteer who's here tonight, donate time and his expertise to work with the children who gave up their recess one day during the cycle, which, you know, a lot of kids don't like to give up recess, but they volunteered. We had about half of the class doing that. And some of the things that children worked on was creating a mural, posters, school-wide displays showing acts of kindness. They created public service announcements that were presented on the morning announcements at school. They did some role-playing and videos showing acts of kindness. They even wrote a song together, which was performed at the school center. So that led to what happened in this year. Once again, my students read some articles about bullying. Again, they wanted to take some action. It was their decision. They wanted to raise awareness. This year, they decided, let's promote the idea of empathy. We have 100% of the class participating this year. They all volunteered. So now we're doing it in class once a week, usually Friday afternoons, the last hour of the day is a good time for us to be doing that. And then we brainstormed some ideas. What can we do? How can we get the word out and raise awareness? They said, let's make posters, let's do some slideshows. We have children creating a newsletter, writing articles about what would you do if you were in that situation? And I have groups of children who are now teachers. They call themselves the Empathizers. They created and taught lessons to children in younger grades. Here's a picture of children in kindergarten, teaching them about what empathy is. The next plan, the next steps are planned to create public service announcements again that will be played on the morning announcements at school. So the children needed to study and learn what empathy is, what it looks like, what it sounds like. They realized that empathy is a quality that we are all born with. Empathy can be developed, cultivated, and strengthened. Empathy leads to happier, healthier, and more successful lives. Why don't you practice empathy? You'll be more popular, you'll be well-liked, you'll have better relationships, you'll get along well with other people. We used research from the Yale Ruler Program. We've been doing some lessons where the children have been learning that people who learn how to identify and manage their feelings feel better, and they deal with stressful situations better. They create stronger relationships with other people, and they perform better in school. And I've seen that happen over and over again. One of the things that the children are learning about this year, which I'll be teaching the younger grades, is that we can use something that we call a mood meter to help us think about the different types of feelings we have. For example, our feelings can be classified into categories: pleasant, unpleasant, high-energy, low-energy. An example, high-energy pleasant feeling would be excited. A pleasant, low-energy feeling would be content, calm, relaxed. That's what we aim to be in most of the time. Unpleasant feelings, angry, are high-energy unpleasant. Low-energy feelings, things like being sad, feeling down. Children are working on writing their feelings. They've created feelings journals. And some of the questions we ask them to think about in writing their journals, how are you feeling today? Where does that fall on the mood meter? And think about what is causing you to feel that way? And what goal do you have for yourself? Where do you want to be? What emotion are you hoping to reach for this day? And what strategy can you use to achieve that goal? Children are learning how to describe their emotions using very specific feelings vocabulary words, learning words like anxious, ecstatic, content, irritated. They're also learning how to describe the feelings of other people by looking at their faces closely, looking at real people's faces, looking at photographs, looking at illustrations of faces in the characters of the books that we're reading, helping us understand the characters by looking at their faces. Being able to identify our own emotions allows us to build empathy by taking another person's perspective. You can't feel what another person is feeling until you're able to identify your own feelings. We've also been working on practicing active listening, which involves listening to others very carefully without judgment, with paraphrasing what they've said, and with asking all clarifying questions. That's a way of being an empathetic listener. In reading, children are putting themselves into their characters' places to deepen their understanding and make higher-level interpretations of the text. We're also going to be learning how we can use strategies to manage our feelings. We've been working with strategies such as mindful breathing. We do that every day when the kids come back from recess. It calms them down, it gets them ready for learning, it focuses their attention, makes them feel relaxed but at the same time alert. Children have also been learning that mindful breathing strengthens self-regulation, it strengthens executive function, and it helps them make wise choices. Another strategy that the children are learning to manage their feelings is self-talk. "I will do my best, even though it's hard, even though it's tricky, I'm not going to give up." So these are all phrases that a person with a growth mindset would be using. They're writing about their feelings in their journal to manage their feelings. Sometimes they just need to take a walk or take a movement break. Sometimes they need to talk to a friend. So the next steps that we're planning are to think about how can we take the work that we've been doing in the school and in the classroom and extend that into the community and beyond? How can we think about performing acts of kindness for groups of people that might be mute in our community and even beyond our community? And we're thinking about how we can continue to brainstorm some ideas. What can we do? What are we concerned about? What actions can we take? And then we'll decide on one of those causes and continue with our work into the wider world. Thank you.
So before we go to questions, hopefully you were able to hear the level of responsive teaching that's going on at Roaring Brook, the collaboration amongst the colleagues, and how joyful the learning is. So we invite you to come and visit us and come see what we're doing around this area and any other area. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for a wonderful presentation. I'd like to open up the board members. Do you have questions?
All right, I'm going to start with these, that's easy. How do you feel your work with kindergartners has changed over the years in terms of the social-emotional teaching and explicit teaching as opposed to what you just did naturally?
Well, that's a really interesting question. Well, we're very fortunate here in Chappaqua to be a fully inclusive district, because when you have children with special needs in your class, and I often do, and I work with my co-teacher, Faye D'Ambrogio, and sometimes we even have children with severe special needs from the inclusive service model. It provides opportunities for the children to very quickly learn how to modify their approach with others depending on that person's individual needs. So to that point, this year, I even have a child who's non-verbal. She's not special needs, but she is a selective mute, actually. And after 23 years of teaching, this is the first time I've ever had that experience. So a good example of how the children regulate their approach to interacting with other children is I was trying to encourage her to talk. So I said, this is way at the beginning of the year, and I said, "Oh, who made your snack for you today?" And she looked at me and, of course, didn't say anything. And another child, thinking that I needed some help, came over and said to her, "Okay, pretend this is your mother and this is your babysitter. Which one made your snack?" So the way that the children interact with each other in a fully inclusive setting is so beautiful, and I would welcome anyone to come visit, because they really take care of each other. And the way things have changed recently is with more children spending more time in front of a screen, there's less interaction with each other, whether it's siblings, even other adults and so forth. So we quickly teach the children, obviously, the very simple niceties like saying thank you to someone who holds a door for you, and also, like Olga said, reading each other's faces and asking each other why, when something goes wrong, you know? Why did you write on my paper? And sometimes that can diffuse a situation really quickly. So I think that's the way it's evolved, and as, like I said, as students with different needs come into the classroom, it provides an opportunity for the children to learn varying strategies.
You know, to expand on that, too, in terms of the technology that's at a younger level, more so than it used to be even three, four, five, six years ago, when they progress from you, so it's great to see that you're still, you know, making sure that they have those one-on-one interactions. And how do you see a difference then moving on like to second grade or fourth grade that maybe generational, that you have to spend more time on things like this, like empathy and then working together because of so much of the technology? And have you had to sort of redouble your efforts to get them to interact with each other?
It's very true. Where before, we would talk about, we need to be kind to someone, show them respect. We really need to do a lot of modeling now, a lot of discussion around it. We use a lot of literature. There's a lot of wonderful literature, and we have all built our libraries in the last probably four years where we have a lot of books that talk about having a growth mindset and what kindness looks like, and how you can have a superpower. And your superpower can be that you're very understanding and you're willing to go and help someone out. Instead of you see them drop their lunch tray and just walk away, they now know, you know what, let me stop and help that friend. But there is a great deal of conversation and role modeling and doing different scenarios where the kids are role modeling and acting out different situations.
And I meant, I'm sorry. I meant to mention that regarding the technology, I really wasn't interested in the children spending time in the classroom with headphones on looking at a computer when we used to have the desktops. So a shout-out to the Chappaqua School Foundation. They provided, I wrote a grant, and they provided the kindergarten at Roaring Brook with a smart table, which the children have to work collaboratively in order to complete games on it, to the point where if you want to change a game, all four members of the team have to agree, and each person has to wait for the icon to come in their corner before it can be turned to another game. And so that's such a great example of how, you know, with a little bit of, you know, tweaking and just looking at things through a different lens that you can make it work. So they're still having the experience with technology, but they're working in a collaborative way.
And they look like they're having so much fun working together, really. It's fantastic.
I'm curious, with the more focused efforts on collaboration, which is great, by the way, and also on the social-emotional learning, I'm just wondering, to what extent you think we'll see a change in just behavior, just social behavior? For instance, in middle school, because kids start to get clicky, sometimes, you know, not necessarily bullying, but sometimes you see kids treating each other a little bit more unkindly, a little more often towards middle school, then they get into cliques and they exclude people. And that sort of thing has happened over generations. And I'm just wondering, I mean, we always had, in this district, we always had programs to teach kind- to teach kindness and gratitude. I mean, I remember years ago, we had the words of the month, there was always a lot of effort. It looks like this is more curriculum-based now, more focused, maybe it was curriculum-based before, I mean, you could certainly correct me. This just seems to be more focused and perhaps deeper. Plus with the collaboration, really forcing kids to, not forcing, but teaching them to work together. And for instance, going out of their groups to see what other groups are doing, I'm just wondering how, to what extent you think this will change behavior so that we have a different specimen of ninth graders, for instance, than we have?
Well, I actually have an anecdote that addresses your point specifically. My sons graduated from Greeley, and when one of them was at Seven Bridges, I accompanied him on a school trip. And so here we are on this big, you know, beautiful bus waiting to go, and there was a clearly a special needs child, it seemed as if he was on the spectrum. And he was on the bus and he had a one-to-one aide, and I remember thinking, oh boy, this poor kid in middle school, I can't imagine how he navigates through the day with kids being the way kids they are in middle school. And we were getting back on the bus to leave, and he sat down and he had some transitional objects with him to comfort him. And every child that got on the bus turned to the child and said, "Hey, how was your day? Do you have what you need?" And they were so comforting and accommodating with him, and it made me feel happy that the work we do in elementary school, I really do think carries over to children's experiences in the middle school and high school. I think there's a direct transfer because it's not different, it's just the way it is. People are diverse.
And I think the emphasis on teaching these skills inside of these authentic learning experiences rather than as sort of a separate time of the day helps with that transfer, so they can draw upon those skills in real contexts and settings.
Do you find the kids in their reading are better able at identifying characters' emotions now that you, and they have the language about writing about it? He seemed happy. Is it more robust now?
I believe it's much more sophisticated. Now that they have the vocabulary, they know what the words optimism, resilience, flexibility, perseverance, they understand what those words mean when they can write about a character. I think this character showed a growth mindset because he did this, he said that. It's much more impressive than the basic, simple emotions.
Even at the kindergarten level, speaking to read alouds and making self-to-text connections, the students are really able to generate more ideas about the feeling words because we're giving them that opportunity to become so self-aware that then they're able to identify those feelings in others. And even just the other day, they came up with words like heartbroken and disappointed and things that were very advanced for a five-year-old.
Do you find that it's helping them too, like in terms of the word and language? Do you see it in the classroom as opposed to a child then that is getting upset or excluded from something? Will they be verbal and say, you know, "I really, I'm upset that you're not letting me do this," or "I really appreciate if you'd let me work with you," as opposed to, which in any scenario, you know, kids could just get upset or walk away or whatever. Do you find that they're engaging more to, you know, actually speak about their feelings as a result?
We're teaching them how to use conflict resolution skills. Instead of getting upset or hitting somebody or yelling at them, we use words. We say to the other person, "When you said this, it made me feel, and next time, could you please do this instead?" And then the other person listens and the other person has a chance to respond. And we try to bring them back together by talking about another topic that's unrelated to what just happened. And again, we can also encourage them to write about it in their feelings journal. So by expressing them using words, they're able to calm themselves down. I had a child this morning who came in and he was very upset, he was crying, and his day had started off poorly. And the other kids went over to him instead of what they could be doing, went over and started to talk to him and said, "What's wrong? What can we do to help you?" And one had his arm around him and said, "It's okay, don't worry, we're gonna, we're gonna," he lost something, "we're gonna find it." And they were very sympathetic to him and wanted to try and see if they could help him. Another kid said, "I lost something too on the bus, but the bus driver found it." So he was showing empathy.
Right.
So I was quite impressed, I kind of stood back for a little while and just kind of watched what was happening. But he had a nice little group around him who really felt that they were caring.
And back to your question about literature, I don't know if you're familiar with the children's book, Leave the Late Bloomer, which is about a little lion that takes a long time to learn the things that his peers have already learned. And last year when I had another child who was non-verbal due to special needs, a child on the playground approached him, a child who's not in our class, and said aloud to the other children around, "Why doesn't he talk yet?" And one of my students said, "He's just a late bloomer." So it's just an all-encompassing, persistent, pervasive throughout the day approach toward integrating social-emotional skills, whether you're in reading or writing or getting ready to go on the bus on recess, it doesn't matter, it's throughout the day, and that's really the only way in which they're going to be able to internalize and then apply it.
I also think that the parents are also sharing that their kids are coming home and talking about empathy and kindness and what it means to be respectful. I was part of the initiative of collaborative fellowship, so for two years I was working on having a growth mindset, and it was through reading and also through word study, but obviously it was embedded in everything that we did. And the parents would come in and tell me things that the children were saying, and the child was having a discussion with his mom, and the discussion wasn't going the way that he wanted it to go. And he turned to his mother and said, "You have a fixed mindset."
So I have a question, and I want to preface it by saying that this work that you're doing is worthy in and of itself without any other added benefits, but I do want to ask whether you've seen any improvement in academic performance as a result of this work? And not everything that is worthwhile is something that you can measure. So I fully recognize that, and like I said, this is worth everything just by itself. But have you, are you able to show a correlation? Is it possible? Have you noticed anything? Just even?
Even if it's anecdotal? If that's what it is, and it's observations where when you started working with a child in the fall and they kind of gave up, and then you started to give them the tools, and then they developed perseverance and they would work through something that was harder.
And it shows in a five-year-old who, in the beginning of the year, when he didn't make his picture the way he wanted it, he would crumble it up and throw it in the garbage. And then as the months go on, he made a mistake and just crossed it out and tried it again. So obviously, that's going to transfer over to other areas of learning that may be challenging.
There's research, Carol Dweck, who wrote Mindset, she has done research that's talked about how the language that kids learn when they're toddlers and in the youngest age, if they can learn that growth mindset language, it impacts them when they're in the like fourth grade and fifth grade and test-taking years, is when you really start to see it show up.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. I was wondering if you've noticed it, even within the year in your classroom, is it something that you can easily measure? Aside from the research which we've seen in that?
As an example, in our emergent storybook unit, with reading, characters, facial expressions, and body gestures, our students were able to, in the book The Carrot Seed, begin reading the words in the story based on what they saw the characters doing. So through acting out the story during that center play, they talked about how the boy looks very discouraged because his brother is telling him that won't come up, the seed won't grow. So they're able to then take the sight words that they're learning, mixed with the facial expressions and the characters' gestures, and point to that page and say, "This is what's happening here." So then they take those mixed with the reading strategies and they're able to decode the words on that page.
Great. And Alga was sharing an example earlier tonight, and we were all out to dinner, about how one of her students did very well on the test because he had used this when describing on one of the essay portions, describing a character. He was able to say, you know, "This character has a growth mindset and these are the reasons why." And that obviously is very impressive.
Everyday conversation.
Right. So I would like to extend my gratitude to Roaringbrook for coming tonight and presenting highlights of your program, and we know that this is just a snippet of the good work that's happening every day in your building. So thank you to Allison and Erin and the faculty for coming tonight. And I also wanted to point out to the board, so this is our final elementary presentation. So I think we've seen themes across the district, right? We've seen project-based learning, coding, students engaged in inquiry, and perseverance, creativity, collaboration, interdisciplinary connections, particularly with our workshops, leveraging our colleagues who are experts to help us guide our own practices. And then I think one of the most important things that we've seen is a Common Design Process, K4, in the district. And it's really exciting that all these attributes are occurring, and we don't even have our makerspaces online yet. So it's going to be amazing to see what happens next year when they all come online in our elementary building. So it's really exciting. So thank you so much for presenting tonight. I didn't know if anyone had any final comments or questions before we move to the facilities report. So thank you. Have a good evening. So Joe, you're going to be next with our facilities update. So just give us a minute to transition everybody, please. So at this point, we have a lot of work going on around the district, so we thought it would be helpful if Joe came, our director of facilities, and gave the board an update on all the projects that we've been working on. So I'd like to welcome Joe.
All right, thank you. That's a hard act to follow. I tell you, and I have to say, when I went to kindergarten, I went there, I played with blocks, I had a snack, I had a nap, and I went home.
It's all good.
I love how you turned out.
I'm a facilities guy.
But Joe is gonna tell you that the maker space for the elementary schools will be on time, so.
That's how you connect to the curriculum.
All right, so tonight, just tonight I'm gonna give you an overview of the building conditions, the bond projects and non-bond projects. I'll try to, I have a lot of slides, but I'll try to move it along. I'm gonna start off at the elementary schools. They had videos, I have a picture, I thought this was good, but. So the first school is West Orchard Elementary School, that's what you're looking at there. West Orchard was built in 1971, it had an addition in 77. In 1996, it's 92,000 square feet. I have it listed as in excellent condition, and I'm gonna go over some conditions of the building. The boilers were replaced in 2012, so they're brand-new, running, in excellent condition. Our HVAC system there, the control system is still hybrid, so we still have pneumatic controls, which are air valves, which are very old, and we have some digital. But the bond's gonna replace all that, and I'll go over that later on. Our unit vents also, they are operating, but you know, teachers will complain they're noisy, they're also gonna be addressed in the bond. Our doors, we had a five- or 10-year door project going on, and all the exterior doors at West Orchard were replaced in the last five years. And the interior doors, which don't meet current code, will all be replaced in the Lighting, oh, windows. The windows are double-pane windows, they are 20 years old, but they're in really good shape. Lighting, we've switched everything over to LED, and this school is totally complete. Roof conditions, the roof is 18 years old, but four years ago we redid the, recoded it. So it has a life expectancy of another 10 years at least. The parking lot surfaces, we repaved maybe two, three years ago. And the play areas are in good shape, there's some of the surfaces need to be redone, we should put it on a long-term plan. We did some work on the handicap ramp over the summer to make it more accessible. Talking about our bond project, before I go into this, I just want to say, the three elementary schools and Seven Bridges really has just started, so we're seeing what life is like during construction. We are taking every effort to make it as safe as possible. We have a project manager on site, we have a weekly construction meeting, and all issues that have been brought to me since it started are addressed immediately. So at West Orchard, the bond project, the Global Learning Center is underway, which projected to complete by the summer, by July 1st, it will be completed, and it's moving along very well. Infrastructure projects in the bond, the exterior repairs will be done over the summer along with the classroom door replacement. The heating controls and the unit vents will be done this spring. And the sidewalk replacement will happen over the summer. The playground renovations are complete, we added a new swing set there, and we also did some resurfacing work. Non-bond projects, these are things that either the bond didn't complete it fully, or we didn't get it in the bond, or there were issues that came up since we, you know, have put the bond forth. Replacing stair treads in all stairwells, replacing a door frame on the back entrance, installing a new roof access door. Right now, to get onto the roof, you climb out a window. It's been that way since the building was built, but we're gonna, we should install a door there. Multi-year plans to replace classroom cabinets, replace floor tile in the D-wing, sink replacements in all the bathrooms, and again, resurfacing the playground. I would say that the biggest issues there that we're gonna have to face in the future, and it's really not much, and it would be resurfacing the playgrounds. It's a costly item, and I think that's something that we need to put on a five-year plan.
Costly like $50,000 or costly like $200,000?
I believe the two that are really bad there is about $110,000.
Each would?
No, total. Yeah. So, okay, next school here I have is Roaringbrook, built in 1951, with additions in '56, and also additions in '97 and 2002. It's 102,000 square feet, and I have it listed in excellent condition. You can see the roof there. Bond project, oh, I'm sorry, building conditions, the boiler also was replaced in 2012. HVAC-wise, we did replace all of the pneumatic controls there, everything is digital, so the heating system's working really well there. The biggest thing to address there, which is in the bond, is the unit vents, which is in the bond and should happen this spring. Door replacement, we replaced all the interior and exterior doors over the last five years in that school. The windows are approximately 20 years old, but they're in great shape and they're, you know, double-pane insulated windows. The lighting, all the lighting was switched over to LED already. The roof is 18 years old, but it's in great shape, and I expect it to last another 10 years. And you'll see that as we go through, some of the schools have roofs that are, you know, 17, 18 years old. And the reason why they didn't, you know, go into the bond was because they're still, you know, in great shape. So there was no need to really replace them, but we'll have to address that 10 years from now.
Do we have a plan to start addressing them? I mean, like, do we put money away, sick and fund, or?
No.
And your budgets, you allocate that?
No. What we are doing is, we have, as you know, we have a preventive maintenance plan on all our roofs, so we're constantly doing tiny repairs to them, making sure they stay up to date. And that's why we're gonna get such more of a useful life out of them, is because we do the PM work.
I just haven't lived through a BOSI's roof.
I like to talk about roofs.
Get concerns.
But I think, Jeff, that's a good question, because at our last facilities committee meeting, we did talk about the possibility of coming forward to the board with the Capital Reserve Fund. And we are having discussion with the Finance Advisory Committee. Actually, we already had the preliminary discussion, we'll probably have another one, and then we're hoping that both committees will make a recommendation to the board.
And then my plan, you know, is to continue to do, you know, five-year projected-out plans. And before we had the bond, we were addressing a lot of roofs yearly, so we were doing sections. You know, it just takes a while, but it definitely would be something we would do. The parking lot services there at Roaringbrook were resurfaced last year. The playgrounds are in good shape, again, we're gonna eventually need to do some work on the rubber ice. You know, a lot of things were done at the exact same time, so their time is coming up. In the bond, the Global Learning Center is underway, on target to In the, in the bond, the Global Learning Center is underway, on target to finish, you know, late June. The infrastructure projects that we have there, a replacement of the curbs and, uh, and the sidewalks there will happen over the summer. The univents, uh, will happen this... You look like I, did I spell that wrong?
I'm trying to understand what a univent is.
You gave me that look like I did something.
I just, could you remind me what a univent is?
Oh, sorry. Okay, okay, thank you. I thought I did, I spelled it or something. All right, so the univents are in the classroom, and they're through the walls, like, you know, go to a hotel, and you get, that's, that's, that's what the univent is. So it's pulling in fresh air from the outside, and it's heating that fresh air. So there's a heating coil inside the univent, um, and that's why teachers say that could be noisy, because there's a motor in there. So that motor makes noise, and hence, that's, that's how we get some issues with them.
I mean, I was sort of laughing at my own ignorance, that's what I was smiling about.
But we need our fresh air percentages with those.
Right. By law, we have to bring in, yeah. So, yeah, we have to bring in, uh, 20% fresh air all the time.
I always want to be the fresh air czar. Going around to schools and making sure that it's 20% fresh air. It's like such a arbitrary law.
So the biggest problems we have is, like, a lot of them get stuck in the closed position, like, stuck in the open position, so the room will overheat, or the room will be too cold, and that's why the classrooms have such a fluctuation. So changing those are, and they're all in the bond, they're all being addressed in the bond. Playground renovations are complete. At Roingbrook, we added, uh, we did some surface work, and we added a piece of equipment.
Which was a gift from the PTA.
Right, yes. Projects that I would put on a long-term plan at, at Roingbrook would be carpet replacement in the office and FAW, replace, um, cabinetry work in the secondary classrooms, resurface the rubber, uh, playground areas, and then continue doing federal maintenance work. So that's what I have there. Um, and again, our future is, is really the playground resurfacing. Here's Grafflin. Grafflin was built in 1962, and immediately had an addition in '64, uh, and then had more work done in '74. It's 96,000 square feet. And I, you know, I, I think the building's in excellent condition. Again, same situation, the boilers were replaced in 2012. The heating system there is still half pneumatic and half, um, digital, it'll all be replaced in the bond to digital controls. The doors, all the exterior doors were replaced in our, in our, uh, five-year plan that we did for door replacement. The interior doors are gonna be addressed, they don't meet, you know, the new fire code, they're gonna be replaced. Windows, this is a school where we have, uh, single-pane glass windows, and, you know, we should probably address them at some point. They all operate fine, but they're all single glass, so energy efficiency is not there. Lighting is all but changed to LED.
Can we put that in EPC?
We could, it's just such a, we, we did windows here at the high school in the EPC, and it's such a, the payback is really rough, it's really hard to get it to work, but we will, uh, keep looking at that. Outlighting, we did, we, it all changed over to LED. The roof condition, uh, is in very good shape, we have 30% of the roof is brand-new, and the other 70% is about 17 years old, so maybe a good 13 years we could have out of that. Parking surfaces, uh, need to be redone, so I'm gonna put that on a long-term plan. And, in my operating budget, I carry $90,000 a year, so it's gonna go to that school. Playground surfaces, uh, playgrounds are in good, good shape. Bond project, uh, the Global Learning Center is underway, on target to complete on time at the end, uh, in June. Infrastructure projects, replacing the air handler for the cafeteria, this was a huge one, that, that unit has been in bad shape, and that's gonna, it's been ordered, and I expect to put it in at the next break. Door replacement, uh, any doors that are not in, in, uh, well, it's about 80% of the interior doors, all classroom doors are in the bond, the other ones I have already, um, put into my O&M budget to replace. Uh, I think, uh, there's, uh, replacement of bathroom counters, place of the heating controls, the heating controls and univents will be in the spring, and the playground renovations are completed already, which we did in a brand-new slide, and where I resurfaced one area. And then also, the PTA did do a piece of playground there. The larger one, I just did the smaller. Things that I think we should do in a, uh, five-year plan there would be to finish any interior doors that weren't done, um, continue on our roof maintenance. The, the lamp posts outside should really be changed at some point, um, we, and we need to continue with the paving. And I like to do some work in the annex building, nothing's been done there in a long time. All right, jumping over to the middle school. This is Bell School. So the Bell School is our oldest school, built in, uh, main section was built in 1925, additions in 1938, 1966, 1974, and 1977. It's 159,000 square feet. We have two playing fields. So I rate this building, uh, condition's good, but becoming excellent.
Okay.
Somebody help, somebody help me with that. And why I say that is because it's our oldest school, it needs, it needs the most work of any school. We've been putting a lot into it, as you know, over the last couple of years, and there's a lot of work going into, which I'll go over, that's in the bond, and then I have in my O&M budget, and I do believe, you know, we're heading to excellent.
But, but you believe that after you finish everything that you're gonna present here, it will be...
Absolutely.
It'll be most excellent.
Most excellent. The boilers were replaced there in 2007. We have a mix of controls there also, uh, which will be, you know, handled in the bond. We, we have done a lot of work on the air handlers there, so they're all working really well, we changed motors, we, we've had them cleaned. The doors, the interior doors in the 1925 section are really bad, and they're all in the bond. The lighting will be changed this spring to LED. The roof conditions, we have flat roofs, half the flat roof is brand-new, was done last summer, and the other half is about 15 years old, in great shape. The section that we did was a real problem, it was leaking, we had problems with it, so very happy that got done last summer. Parking lot surface was also redone last summer, I had all-new drainage and curb work there.
I just want to add one thing. Uh, Jeff, I don't know how you remember, the boiler, the boiler replacement was our first capital project here.
It was, when we first came on, when we came on the board 11 years ago, it came on the district.
Right. They just, well, I just came here when they came, they were, they were put in. Okay, uh, bond projects, the steam center is, it was, is on track to start this summer. Everything's going well with the, the, everything that's sitting up at SED is looking like it's on target, and we're looking at a February bid.
Oh. This one, this, I'll bid it out already, just that we cannot start until, uh, the school...
Summer.
The summer time.
So, um, in, in that, in the, in the bond project for this summer is the renovation of eight science classrooms, desperately needed. Door replacement, interior and exterior, bathroom renovations, all the bathrooms, um, will be fully renovated. Replacement of the heating controls will be this spring. The exterior masonry work will be over the summer, the univents are this spring, the cupola has been completed, um, and the removal of the asbestos floor tile was done, uh, over the summer. Field restoration work is set to start, we're hoping this spring.
So I just want to mention regarding the timeline, the, because we cannot start our, our renovation until the school is over, so the steam center is not gonna be finished until Thanksgiving of, uh, this year, uh, but the eight science classroom will be finished this summer. So by opening of school in September, the, the science classrooms will be all complete.
So there is a, a, a longer list here of non, you know, things that didn't make it into the bond, and so I have a, a projected plan for these. So the renovation of the cafeteria serving line and eating area, um, that's, we have that kind of slated for 2019 summer. Just continuing to do slate repair, that's just an ongoing thing, we did a lot of work over the summer on that, it was in the bond. Door replacement, that was nine of ours, the fourth floor, which I've already ordered all those doors, they're all in bad shape, I'm gonna replace them out soon as I have them. That's like an in-house project that we would do. Continue to work on air handlers and heating pumps, uh, exterior stair repairs that are outside, refinish the wood exterior doors that are still there, replace exterior handrails, um, all these items up there are things that we would just do within the O&M budget. All right, uh, so here's Seven Bridges, where I went from our oldest school to our newest school. Seven Bridges built in 2003, it's 160,000 square feet, and obviously, the building is in excellent I, I say all the time that that's our, it's our newest building, but it's our building has the oldest boilers, so the boilers are original. They operate excellent, uh, our whole heating system there is all on a Honeywell digital control system, constantly getting updated on the software. Uh, all of our lighting is on that same program, uh, so the HVAC system is, is working great there. The doors and the windows are in great shape, I just need to continue doing preventive maintenance on them. Uh, the lighting is being switched over to LED, which, uh, will happen in spring, summer. The roof conditions are excellent, uh, the parking lot surfaces are fine, the only areas we have problems are the, the concrete speed bumps, which are cracked, um, and we have some sidewalks, and that does it both in the bond. The bond projects, the steam center is in progress right now, and on target to be completed, uh, before the summer, it's moving along well. The sprinkler, uh, the infrastructure projects, the sprinkler system on the two playing fields was completed. Repairs to the speed bumps, I said, will be, you know, over the summer, and the rock wall, um, we're trying to get done in the spring.
Should've done the sprinklers two weeks ago, right?
Huh?
Should've done the sprinkler repair two weeks ago.
No, that's outside.
Oh, fuck, outfield, fuck. Maybe could've had a skating rink.
Well, we, we almost had one in the office. I should've put those pictures up. So, okay, so things that I think we need to do there, um, continue on door and hardware, just staying up on that, since the building is, you know, getting a little older. Painted door frames, believe it or not, we just saw painting, classrooms and door frames are ready. We need to build a handicap ramp, which we will do this spring to get to the upper field, so there's no way to get there right now, um, if you're in a wheelchair.
Not, not, not through the answer?
It's gonna be right over there, yes. Right now, we allow people to drive up onto that, and then, you know, they're able to get out of the car there, but we're gonna build an actual ramp. Carpet replacement in the commons, the auditorium, I believe over the next five years, we should start looking at that, and now, obviously, the main office, um, and then...
I have a question about that, white, uh, white carpet instead of tiles?
Okay, so, that's a good question. So the actual, um, uh, main office area will be tile, and the offices that got ruined and the conference room will be carpet.
Absorb sound.
Okay, why?
It's, you know, in the office, it's more of a sound situation. That's why the main office got carpet from the beginning, is just trying to cut down on sound.
Right. But this is talking about commons and the, well, the auditorium, I guess...
Oh, the auditorium has, just the runners that are down the aisle.
The aisles.
Yeah, it's just the aisle. Where you actually sit is...
And the commons?
The commons are upper and lower commons, the carpet there.
Right, so is it, why is it...
Oh, it would be a noise factor.
Noise, okay.
Yeah.
We used to have our meetings there, and definitely would've been our...
Yeah, it's ceiling's so high there.
But in the auditorium, sometimes, you know, people do, you know, special, specialized combination of carpets and tiles just for the acoustics, because, you know, we have concerts in the auditorium, and so...
We would just be replacing just the runner.
Is there any thought given to, okay.
Yeah, and you know, um, like, to give you an example, today, John and I went to KGND to talk about, um, this sprinkler head issue that popped, you know, why that happened, and, and also, we talked about what we should be replacing in, um, in the main office, like, what type of tile. So they're meeting me there tomorrow to make sure we're picking something that will not only work with the decor, but will be the right thing for the office. Oh, and then the last thing is to refinish the stopits and the columns. When you're walking in, those wood, the wood stuff and the columns, they need to be refinished, and I'll, I'll do that this summer. Okay, the high school, this is moving along pretty quick. The high school, so here's the high school, originally built 1957.
It's weird to see the people off of us.
Right, additions were done in '66, '71, '79, 2003. It's a total of 280,000 square feet, and we have nine playing fields. I think we have more playing fields than any school district in the county. I'm pretty sure. So, um, I, I believe we're in excellent shape. Oh, boy, oh, there's another picture of the outside. Uh, our boilers were replaced in 2007, but in 2016, I added a third boiler, which is more, a more efficient boiler, that became our number-one boiler, so that boiler runs, um, the majority of the time, and the larger boilers will only come on when needed, when we have colder weather. So it's, we did that in the energy, the second energy performance project. They will all be, uh, switched over to gas, we're hoping, uh, the pipe is in, we're just waiting for Con Edison to make the connection.
Do they do their work outside our entrance? The big...
The gas box is not in yet. That's what we're waiting for. We're on the list, and I believe it was said spring, um, we're on the Con Ed list for the spring. And then we'll be running off of gas, we won't run off oil any longer, it's be util. HVAC here, uh, we, we have a mix of controls, and then, that'll all be switched over, uh, you know, in the bond. Doors, we've been replacing doors here for 10 years, on, on a door plan, so we have a good jump on that. There are a couple of doors that are in the bond that will complete it, which I believe is like over in the K building. Our windows, we did some windows in the bond, the only windows we have that are single-pane that are left are C, D, and E, are the only ones that are left, are single-pane windows. Lighting, this summer, everything will be put over to LED. The roof conditions, I'll read you off our, uh, the gym roofs are one to three years old, so they're all brand-new. The library, the cafeteria, and the H-wing were done over the summer, brand-new roofs, they were, uh, you know, worst condition. K and L will be done in the bond, which are my only roofs that are right now in bad condition. J is 10, is, uh, the auditorium roof is 10 years old, J is 14 years old, and D and C is 18. So we have no roof conditions right now, um, except for K, which is gonna be done in L. So we're in pretty good shape. I don't, I don't expect any of these, uh, have any other roof to be replaced within 10 years.
You missed the last one.
Oh, parking lot service, okay. So the parking lot is, is in bad shape here, um, and it's slated for the summer, and not only the parking lot, but also the, uh, the walkways and the steps up from each bay area with new handrails.
It's really crumbling, yeah.
Yeah, it's really in bad shape, so...
Are you gonna build a second deck in this senior parking lot?
Yes.
I had to touch a subject.
You're gonna build a parking lot, I should imagine. Is the handicap accessible, like, the parking lots, you know, for someone who's handicapped to get up with the stairs, or, I mean, is there anything that needs to be fixed with that?
Well, our handicap spots should be in the first bay, 'cause there really, if you're in the other ones, there's really no way to, to get there.
Right, but still, like, when you, when you think about it...
Requirements are that the, like, those spots right outside the...
Right. As close to the building as possible.
Right.
Parking down there, you push it to the sidewalk.
Yeah, so, okay.
All right, uh, I went through the thread, okay. Bond projects, um, the, the steam center, the upper L, uh, K110, the Global Learning Center, all of those are slated to start this summer, and, uh, when I said earlier, I meant here. This is up at SED, and we're looking to be out to bid by February. So it's really, I'm really excited, because this is, we're, we moved through the process of SED pretty quickly, uh, and we are really on target. Usually, we're always like rushing, rushing, we are really on target. These bids are gonna be good in February. These bids are gonna be good in February.
Let me just add one thing. So for the high school, the steam center, the L building, the K-110, and the global learning center, the library, and the C field, they're all one package. And the last time when we checked, we are up this week. However, this week is the week that the facility is planning, they are moving their office. So we will be, probably be reviewed next week. And I don't expect any major hurdles. And today, we just heard it from KGND that a public library project has been approved. So, actually, I haven't shared it with Pam yet, but this is the situation. And we were looking at probably in February, we'll be able to go out to bid.
Right, so all three people are moving their office this week?
I was gonna say, the one guy, does he have to carry his own box?
They have an expedited process now, this has-
They do, they do. It's really, it's outsourced, and that's why it's moving so fast. And then the turf fields, as you know, we all know, one was completed and the second one is on target to start this spring. Infrastructure projects, a lot of the work was done in the auditorium already last summer, but we're gonna do the lobby of the auditorium this summer. Along with interior doors, exterior doors. I mentioned the roof replacement already. We're replacing the, this is a big thing, replacement of the kitchen exhaust system. It's been a huge problem for me for a while, I'm really happy we're gonna get that changed. We're getting, we're replacing some ceiling tiles in the band room and orchestra room. Replacing, we're doing some repairs to the wood and the steel and the connections. We're doing partial Fritz tile replacement, that's throughout the, yeah, I know, it's really bad. Replacing the heating controls, as you know, and the univans, that's gonna happen this spring. And we talked about paving the parking lot. Things that I think we should be putting into a long-term plan, you know, continue repairs in door hardware. That's just a constant battle. Painting door frames, painting classrooms. I wrote down installing new lights, I meant additional lights. The K building hallways is, you know, there's not enough lights in that hallway, I believe, in the stairwell, so I wanna do something with that. The Fritz tile, we didn't have enough in the bond to do all the hallways. And all the hallways are getting pretty, you know, pretty bad, the Fritz tile's coming apart. So that's something I like to put on a long-term plan to do. Also, heating pumps, which those things we do now. Like, in the operating budget, we're constantly replacing pumps. I like to start doing some renovations to the boys' and girls' bathrooms in this, in the high school, along with the locker rooms. They could really use an upgrade. This is my last slide. Okay, so my goal is to maintain the buildings and the fields in excellent condition. And how am I gonna do that? Through preventive maintenance plans, multi-year repair plans, EPC opportunities, and to use best practices for cleaning. You know, I do wanna say again, the bond is addressing a large amount of repairs and building upgrades for our schools. Will be even more inviting and a more better place for learning and teaching after these projects are done. And for me to sit here and say the worst things that I see is we surfing our playgrounds, we're in really good shape. You know, 10 years ago, when I was sitting here saying, you know, all of our boiler problems, you know, I, you know, we're lucky that we don't really have anything. All my counterparts are jealous.
That's true.
Any questions?
This was so thorough.
I'll take it that way.
It's an amazing accomplishment that you keep all this running as smoothly as it does, really. It's incredible, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we have, we have 550 pieces of heating and air conditioning equipment we try to maintain.
Heating and air conditioning equipment or just heating?
We do have air conditioning equipment. We might have as much, but-
I was supposed to tell you, we've been with the Seven Bridges there.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank Joe, I mean, it was, this is a great detailed presentation for the board and for the community. So thank you, Joe, very much.
Right, it was excellent, thank you.
And now, I'd like to introduce John, who's going to do a very quick budget preview for the Board of Education, just so you have an understanding of what we're thinking about as we are, have been working with our administrators on the budget process for the past month and a half.
Okay, is budget time again? And we're preparing the budget for 2018 and 2019. And usually, when we talk about the budget preview, we'll give a rollover budget. We'll do some projections, we will actually put some numbers up there. But this year is, I think, is a unique time. And we have, you know, later on, when in the presentation, I'll talk about it. We have quite a bit of unknowns, a lot of unknowns out there. And therefore, I think it's a little bit too early to put the numbers there. But I will be able to provide as many, as much information as possible now. So I think you will get an idea of what is gonna be in the budget, what are the challenges that we are facing, and we'll go forward from there. And so our next key date is really March 7th. And that's the date that the superintendent is gonna present her budget. So here, we talked about the factors. And the pink ones are the external factors. And the gray ones are the ones that are internal and local items. And the yellow ones are the negotiations item. So this is the time, you know, Christine earlier talked about the possible potential impact that federal tax law may have impact on the school districts. The question is, how come this is not there? Well, the reason is because that doesn't have a direct impact on the budget itself, on our budget. But we're very aware of the concerns, we're very aware of the potential impact to our taxpayers. So we're definitely taking into consideration of the issues that we are facing and into the preparation of the taxes. And so the next slide is the calendar. You know, calendars, basically, we are still following all the years that we have been following. And the key date is May 15th of this year is the budget vote. It's always the third Tuesday of May. And these are our two strategic questions. I know the board is reviewing the questions and, but these are the two questions that we constantly challenge ourselves and ask ourselves. And these are the four pillars. I'm gonna run over these quicks and then I'll go to the main topics. You know, the pieces that will influence the budget and those that we know and those we don't know. So the four pillars are the class size, the programs, the infrastructure, and the contractual obligations. Obviously, for this budget presentation, preparation, the number four is a very important piece. And in the next couple of slides, I'll talk about it. And this is not a mistake. You know, here we say operating standards for 2017, 18. So this is the direct copy from last year. And the reason we didn't come up with new operating standards for the next school year is because we're going through the process for long-term planning, the strategic planning. So the operating standards may change for the future years, but at this point, we're not touching these two lists. Okay, so here, we'll spend more time. So what do we know that will impact the budget? These are the items that we know. So the projections, we already have the enrollment projections. Let me just get to that plate so I can give you some numbers. Okay, so we're projecting a slight enrollment increase district-wide. And for the three elementary schools, we're talking about collectively, we are projecting a decrease of 28 students. And for the middle schools, we have a very good sign, is we are projecting an increase of 62 students. And for the high school, we have a decrease of 21. These are all projections. So the elementary school is a decrease of 28, and middle school is an increase of 62. And then the high school is a decrease of 21. So district-wide, we're projecting an increase of 13 students. And so you'll probably ask me what's included in here. So in the projection, we have also two unknowns. Well, other than the incoming kindergarten, that's what we always have to deal with. But we also have two new developments that we have some numbers in there. One is the Cooperla Building at Summer Greenfield Development. My understanding from the planning board is that the residency is gonna start moving in next month, in February. And so that will have an impact of Grafflin and Bell and the high school. And then also, at this point, I was told that in January 2019, the Conifer Building may be open. So that will also have an impact. And the schools will be Rowan Brook and Bell and Greeley. So in the projections, we have these two developments in the mix. So, you know, this is really just truly projections, you know, we have the kindergartens and the two developments. But our projections are pretty accurate. I'll just give you the number for the 2017, 18. Our actual number was 3,823 in district students. And our projection was 3,802. So there was an actually increase of 21 students, which is within a 0.5%. So the projection was pretty accurate. And then we go to the contracts. We have four bargaining units. At this point, only, we only have one contract that is gonna go forward to the next year. That is the administrative contract. And so on the next slide, I'll talk about the ones that we need to negotiate this year. And employee retirement systems, this is the ERS number. And this is the area that we have slightly good news. And the rate is gonna drop from 15.3% to 14.9%. So there's a drop of 0.4%, but the impact on the budget is very, very minimal. Because most of our employees are really in the TRS. In the ERS, we have the custodial staff and support staff in this system. And then we already know the assessed growth factor, that will impact the calculation of the tax cap. And that number is 1.34%. So that's a very large increase from the current year, 0.24%. And the next one is-
John, what would that translate in money, you know, dollar amount?
The dollar amount, so this is for tax cap calculation.
Right, right.
And I just use a rough number. If we talk about the, just for easier to calculate. If I say the tax levy of $100 million, our tax levy is higher than $100 million. So, but if I use $100 million, 1.26, represent 1.26 million dollars. So that will give us more room for the tax cap calculation. So-
Is that relevant?
So the question is, you know, do you wanna go over the tax cap or under the tax cap? That will help us to stay under the tax cap. Does it, is it relevant? All depends. For us, I don't believe this year is gonna be relevant, but for certain times, obviously, yes.
I just don't think we should just say we can go up to the maximum of the tax cap, so.
Well, let me put it-
I don't think anyone has said that.
Let me put it this way. Since the inception of the tax cap, we have never gone up to the maximum.
What's that?
Since the inception of the tax cap, we have never gone to the maximum. We always ask for what is the right amount for our education. And so health insurance premiums. We already know the increase. And, you know, for me, it's still a high number, it's a 3.75% increase. But if you look at the industry, 3.7% is really a very healthy number. And for this current year, for the 17, 18 school year, our increase right now is 8%. So it is a good number, but if you look at the industry, it's really the high, single-digit or even into the double-digit increase every year. So we have been managing, this is, we are basically with a consortium, so it's self-managed. And I think we have been doing a good job. And I think you probably also know the previous years, it was, the rates were very good, the premium increases. And equalization rates, we already know the final numbers. And the good news is they are going the same direction. And so we don't need the assessors to come to explain, help me out. For Newcastle, is the rate is decreased from 19.5 to 19.05. And for Mount Pleasant, is decreased from 1.52% to 1.43%. It really doesn't mean anything right now until when we start calculating the tax rate. And, but, but the indication is telling me is that when the equalization rate goes down, that is saying that the property value is actually going up. Otherwise, you know, the rates will not be going down. So these are the things that we don't know. And obviously, the first one is probably the most important piece, is the contract for three units. Three contracts, this is for the teachers' union, for the custodial union, and also for the support staff union. They are all gonna be expired by the end of this school year. So we are either in negotiations or we will be in negotiations. And hopefully, we will have a settlement before the end of the school year. And the teachers' retirement system, this will also have an impact, pretty large impact on the budget. The reason is because so much of our salary is in the TRS. And the unfortunate piece is that the rate is actually going up. And we only got an indication, current year is 9.8%. And next year, they are giving us a range of 10.5 to 11%. So the question is, why, when the stock market is doing so well, that the rates are going up? And the reason is because their expected return rate, they're using a very unrealistic number. They're using an 8%. And you know, there's no such thing as 8% return. And so, so right now, for next year, they're gonna drop it to 7.5. When you lower that, it's still unreasonable, still not realistic. But the problem is that, you know, when I was looking at it, I was recommending that they drop very minimal, every year drop a very, very small amount. So you will have less impact. But dropping a 0.5, they created a hole that we all have to fill, that's the problem. And therefore, the rate is actually, definitely is gonna go up. And that represents an increase from 7% to 12% increase. And that is gonna have a major impact. And there's another reason why I'm not projecting the numbers right now. Because by the end of January, or the latest, the first week of February, we will know the number. So that will help us with the superintendent's budget calculations. And the state aid, Vicky already talked about it. I think we will have a better understanding when the governor presents his budget. And I don't think there's a date set yet, but I know it's in the 20, January 20-something. Probably between January 20th and the 31st, sometime around there. He's gonna have his budget presented. So the CPI for tax cap calculations, I know Jeff, you're gonna ask me whether it's relevant, but the number is probably gonna be 2%. As of December, it was over 1.9%. So there is inflation and- So there is inflation and the calculation is probably going to be two percent. And obviously, the tax cap number, we don't know. Because there are several pieces are missing. One, two of them were mentioned here already. One is CPI and one is growth rate. Well, growth rate, we know. CPI, we don't know. And then also, we don't know the state A piece. They are going to the tax cap calculations. And the transportation cost, we don't know. But we will provide an estimated number. Because that CPI number is not going to be released until June. So we always do our best calculations. And then we also don't know the special education placement. And then also the debt service. Usually, the debt service is on the previous page. But the reason is here is because I think you know that for the new bond that we plan to borrow, we only borrowed the first tranche, sixteen million dollars. So we still have the balance that we need to borrow. And it may come in this year, it may come in next year. So right now, we don't know. So we are waiting before we can put some numbers together. And then assessed tax valuations. We're not going to get the estimated number until the end of March. So we don't know those numbers yet. So, you know, you can tell that this list is actually far greater than the previous page. And therefore, we are not doing the actual projections right now. And I think this is an important piece that we want to mention is the commitment we made to the residents when we proposed the bond. And the language that we used was that the tax levy would not increase as a result of the forty-two point five million dollar bond. So at the time, we talked about four methods and, not possibility, four things that we're going to use to fill this to make it tax levy neutral for this particular bond. One was that in our budget, we have an interfund transfer for capital projects of five hundred seventy-five thousand every year. We carry that. And we said that we were going to reduce four hundred seventy-five thousand. We keep the a hundred thousand dollars in the budget. And the second piece was that we're going to use the sale of Zarder properties and some other properties that, you know, we have opportunities, we'll use the sale to fill this. And I forgot, what was that? Oh, and then the most important one. The third one is that two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, the current debt service is going to drop off one point seven million dollars. So we had to fill the gap until two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. And then we also say, whatever is missing, we're going to use fund balance. So here, because Zarder's property has not been approved, our plan, so we don't have to sell. We are very hopeful, but we don't know when, you know, whether it's going to be this year or next year, we'll be able to sell. So right now, in the post-budget, we'd definitely reduce the interfund transfer by four hundred seventy-five thousand. And it's very, very possible that we'll use fund balance to bridge the gap. So we'll make sure that the debt service for this bond is going to be tax neutral. Tax levy neutral.
We have a projection on the interest rates we're going to have to pay for our bond?
Yes, we used three point seven five percent.
And what did we pay for the first sixteen million?
Two point six.
I was going to say, that's really high.
That's why we wanted to borrow the first one, because I was very worried. Because at that time, I don't know whether you remember, in September, October, the interest rate was shaky. And right now, everything is calm. But, you know, at that time, we didn't really know.
Oh, no.
Okay, so we borrowed, so we have a very large possibility that we can come in under three point seven five, which will be a savings for the school district. Okay, so right now, we don't know when we're going to borrow.
We'll look at another way, we can go all the way up to about four point two five.
Possibly.
Or four.
But the key really is that we cannot borrow until, the question is, how come we didn't borrow the all forty-two point five? The reason is because the state law is that until the projects are approved, you cannot borrow. So at the time when we borrowed, we only have sixteen million dollars. So we only borrow sixteen.
John, what is holding up the approval of the Zarder property?
It's just, the Zarder?
Yeah.
Well, it was a very lengthy one. I think we started, Jeff and I, we were just talking about it. I think we started like five or six or seven years ago.
Seven.
But it's just a very lengthy process because they want to look at a lot of, you know, we have the preserved land, we have to-
But have we done everything that we need to do on our end?
Yes, but, you know, to get to the-
And where is the holdup? What is going on?
We got the preliminary approval, you know, verbal approval. But the problem was to get to that point. Because they kept asking us to make adjustments. You know, we come up with a preservation plan, come up with, I don't know what's the other plan called, but all kinds of-
Conservation, I know two other plans, the regular plan and-
Something, you know, one is a normal plan, one is a preservation plan. At the end, I think we did a marriage and we did a combination. And but they still want us to adjust.
But we've done that.
We have done that.
We've jumped through every hoop they've asked us to jump through.
So then now that we've done that, what else is holding it up?
But after that, then we have to get everything else done. You know, septic, you know, the, all the boring, everything we have to do.
Oh, so you couldn't do that before?
Right now, we have to do all the things that we are required to do. So we are hoping in February, we can go back for some final meetings. Hopefully, you know, so we'll see.
Okay.
And after that, we're going to look at possibly at least one other property and maybe two. But we want to get this one settled first. And then once it is settled, then we can try to sell it.
And we're dealing with the, not the zoning board, the planning board?
Planning board, yes. Okay, so this is history. I just want to show that our last eight budgets, that the budget dollar amount, the increases. And these are the tax levy, you can read this, so that's why we have this large ones, the budget increase average. And these are eight budgets, but seven increases in the tax levy and then the tax rates. And I'm going to skip over this, but the key is really, you know, the tax cap started two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. So this is, I think, the seventh budget. And the key here is that tax levy cap is less than two percent or CPI, whichever is less. And for this current year, the CPI was one point two six. But we're thinking that next year is probably going to be two percent. And I think people were getting the tax rebate because we are in compliance of the tax cap. And so the next steps, you know, we want to resolve all the unknowns. We want to try to fill the gaps to make them become known and put in what we know, that list. And we need to finalize the personnel numbers. And we need to seek further savings. And Superintendent will present her budget on March seventh. And, you know, this is what we know, we will come out with a tax cap. So we want to know, what are some questions that you have?
What worries you the most? What worries you the most? Me too.
And that also has the largest impact.
It's a little hard without the numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But you can understand why we can't really put the numbers out there. The reason is because, you know, where do you go?
Right, I'm just saying that that may be why we don't have the questions we usually have. So, yeah, we understand though, yeah.
And also, we definitely understand everyone's concerns. Right now, especially with the impact of the federal taxes, so.
We're really worried about that. We've spent a lot of time talking about that. It's really unfortunate the federal government made this decision. And the impact that that's going to have on our community.
It's unfortunate the federal government made that decision?
Yeah, I wish they didn't, quite frankly, with the deduction, the deduction part of it. Yeah, and it's going to impact a lot of our families.
And here, we can still come back to the questions, but I just want to finish. I have two more slides. This is the budget calendars, calendar. The superintendent's budget is March seventh. And also, the budget presentations, we have from March fourteenth through March twenty-eighth. I think there are three board meetings, three conservative board meetings. And then on April eleventh, we have a budget adoption. In between, we have, what do you call it, a recess, the April, March-April recess. And the budget hearing is May second. And that's the time the library will present its budget. And the budget vote is May fifteenth. So we worked out with the PTA. We'll have, we'll hold a community forum at Bell on Tuesday, March twelfth. We have morning session and we have evening sessions. And right now, our thinking is that we're not going to have a budget Q and A. Because we usually have one at the end of April, beginning of May. But usually, we just have probably one or two people coming. Because at that time, the budget has been adopted already and there's nothing you can change. And so that's why we encourage people, if they have questions, they want to make comments, they want to make suggestions, come to the community forum on March twelfth. Because that's the time that we're still listening, we can still-
And those are usually very well attended.
This one, yes.
Especially the morning ones.
But you remember the Q and A, no one really came to any of those meetings. That's why we're not even contemplating now, so.
Historically, John, when does, well, what do you shoot for in terms of wrapping up the contract negotiations so that we can have an accurate budget? What's the timeframe with that generally, or how has that been over the years?
Usually, the one that's optimistic is May of June. If we're going to wrap, it's going to be May and June. But as you go further into the negotiations, you have a better idea.
You have an idea in terms of budget planning, okay.
What's the date of the meeting where the superintendent is going to present?
Oh, here.
March seventh.
Well, I strongly recommend-
The second one, March seventh.
That the community give input before that. Not second guess it, but give suggestions.
But the question is that if you don't see the budget, how do you give input?
You could give input in terms of areas to, you know, you look at the four pillars and you look at the areas that they think is important and not as important.
But they might want to talk specifics about what our presentation was.
Comments, you know, anytime.
We could make an adjustment prior to the budget adoption, right on August, on April eleventh. Because that's the final, that is when you're adopting the budget. That's what I mean, we'll see based on what takes place and what numbers we have. We could add a community session if it's warranted and people expressed an interest.
You know, the reality is that we are very thankful that PTAs always sponsor our budget forum. But, you know, if we need additional ones, we can ask the PTA to support or we can schedule, right?
So we look forward to seeing the numbers on March seventh. In the meantime, people can feel free to email us, call, ask questions. And we will move forward. Every year, it seems that there are additional factors that make everything even more challenging than the years before. And every year, it seems that, you know, we're facing the worst challenges. And, you know, we always do our best and somehow come up with responsible budgets. And we will continue to do that.
I think, you know, we always keep in mind that, you know, it's, you know, it's a high-tax school district. Ninety percent of our revenue is coming from taxpayers. That's definitely, you know, we remember that always. But also, we want to maintain our standards, we want to maintain our schools.
John, I actually do have a question. You were talking about the residential pieces of Conifer and of Chappell Crossing. Do we have any visibility as to when some of the commercial revenue that we hope might generate tax revenue would come online at Chappell Crossing?
Well, I think-
Wasn't there a settlement, John, with the tax cert, in terms of what exactly they were going to pay for the first few years?
Yes, but as soon as they start construction, they can start reviewing the, you know, the settlement is that, you know, they cannot challenge for three years. But the assessor can always assess for, you know, increased assessment.
If they're starting to generate real revenue.
But I think, I think what you see is actually, when we talk about the assessment growth rate, it goes up one point two six. I think that reflects a little bit already.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't know what the assessor is going to do.
Well, nothing's open yet, right, so, you know.
So if the, if the commercial numbers goes up, you know, it would lessen the burden of the-
Right, that's what I mean, I mean, something that we need to look hopefully forward to as a way of keeping-
But on the other hand, we have absolutely no control.
No, I understand that.
John, from a dollar amount standpoint, if the, if the three contracts are not settled and they go into Triborough, what is the dollar amount that the total for each one would go up by? And what is the average, like, yeah, I won't, dollar, but percentage is good, I can, I can too.
Our total salary is about sixty million dollars, okay? So if you subtract out the administrator's contract, we're talking about probably fifty-six, fifty-seven million dollars. So if you look at, you know, if it is two percent-
Two percent?
If it is two percent, you know, we were talking about, you're talking about Triborough. If you use two percent, you know, I'm not saying to use two percent, but if you use two percent, that's a one million dollar. However, all depends where you look at it. Because when we do budgeting, we always do zero base. So you cannot just look at last year's or carrying, coming into this year's budget. The reason is because we start from scratch. So I don't have that number right now. Okay, so I'm not going to say salary, maybe I'm using the wrong way to answer your question. Let's say this year, the seventeen eighteen year salary total is sixty million, let's say sixty million. But right now, I'm actually going to use the actual, so actual may be one million dollar less. Does that sort of answer your question? So just because the Triborough is, whatever that is, it's now going to be added on automatically to the seventeen eighteen budget. Because I need to calculate the actual, because-
But in theory.
An estimate would be one point two million dollars.
We don't know what steps are worth, right, because it's just steps that would go up.
Yeah, because right now, if you go to Triborough, everyone gets a step. If you're step-eligible or if your contract has step.
But there would be no salary increases, oh, additional salary.
So if you use two percent, we're talking about probably one point one million.
And two percent of the entire budget, one point two is two point four.
One point one, you had to, you had to, you had to use that against the tax levy. Because the tax cap is against tax levy. So it's probably one point one percent.
Jeff, we can actually get you those numbers, if you want them. But you're saying that it could be a misleading number anyway?
At this point, I think, you know, it's a little bit too early. But, you know, you are asking a hypothetical question, right?
I'm trying to do back of the envelope comment, I mean, I'm not holding you to the exact number. But it sounds like the entire tax levy, tax cap increase is eaten by the amount of the increase at Triborough. Is that a fair statement?
If you, I think, if you ask me another question, you know, maybe I, maybe I'll just ask myself a que, maybe I'll ask myself two. I'll ask myself two questions. I'll follow up what Allison asked, because I was going, I was hoping that Allison would ask me the second question, that, that, you know, what, what you worry, you know, what is the second thing that you worry the most? Actually, state aid. You know, that is such an unknown. I think, like Vicki said, usually in the governor's state-of-the-state speech, he would talk about education, but, you know, he really sort of avoided. So we don't know what, what, what he's thinking. And then also, recently, when you really look at tax, tax cap, he really holds that as very sacred, because, Vicki, I know you, you follow this. There are two legislations that actually passed both houses, and they have really minimal impact, and they are the right thing to do. He vetoed both. So anything that touched tax cap, he's going to veto. It doesn't matter what. And so we, we also, by association, we want to lobby. So we are trying to, trying to influence the governor regarding the, what the salt is going to have impact on the taxpayers. So we met with his advisor, and they, they actually say, you know, probably not, not to go that direction. Because it's not, it's not going to be well, it's not going to be well received. So, you know, we, we don't know at this point. So that's the second thing I worry about. What was the question you, oh, so the, the third question, the second question I asked myself is, if I give a projection, what is going to be the tax cap, if you look at the percentage, it's going to be in the high threes.
High threes?
Yes.
The tax cap?
And then as a projection, would you project what our budget increase will be?
No, it's going to be way below that.
So all things being equal, state aid being equal.
How do you get, how do you get to the, the threes, threes? So let's say the CPI is two, and the assessment growth is 1.34, so it's 3.34. I'm just throwing this, some numbers, because when you really calculate, it's not exactly, you know, 1.34 equals 1.34. And then also, because we're going to, we have taken our new debt service, that will also add to it.
So, all right, so, but all things being equal, okay, putting aside, state aid is the same, everything that we know is what we know. The, the tax, oh, no, it wouldn't be. So the tax cap can go up higher than the.
Yes.
But you know, to, to, the, the truth is, honestly, I never look at a tax cap. I really just look at what do we really need.
That was my point before.
So, so if you look at our records, because I have it, our tax cap is much, much, much higher than our proposed tax levy increase.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Okay, I think that does it for the presentations. Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll move on to committee reports. The policy committee does not have anything to report today. We were supposed to vote on the public participation policy, but we, we'd like to wait for all five board members to be here to do that, so we will do that at the next meeting. Any other committee reports at this time? Okay, so we will move on to questions and comments. I will remind the audience that please limit your comments to three minutes. Our district clerk will time that. And please come up to the microphone and state your name and ask your question or make your comment.
Judy McGrath, I have comments on several different topics. I'll be as quick as possible. First, on the new website, I just wanted to note that on the school board page, all the archived information has disappeared, and I would ask that that be put back, all the information that was in place on that school board website be reinstated as soon as possible. And that includes all information about past board meetings, agendas, and contracts, and the finance advisory group.
The stuff that was removed, the PDFs, was because there were PDFs of pictures, and they weren't ADA compliant, and they were working diligently to put everything up.
Okay, I didn't think there were pictures in, in, whatever.
The way a PDF is, there weren't.
All right.
We couldn't read it, but.
Okay, I'm just making my, my, my request. I, I also want to voice that I'm still against the changes you want to make in Policy 105. I think that you are restricting communication with the, with the community. This is the only time you have to address the school board and, and so many other things, like at the last school board meeting, when you had the presentation from the consultants, you're talking about the community coming forward and being more open and more transparent. And you're taking, in my mind, a big step backwards. And you also, you know, I, I understand that last year, there was some difficult communication with community members, but I would hope as a board and being professional, you know how to handle that communication, instead of restricting that communication as a response. Finally, on the budget and the bond, I have several questions. One is, the student number that you used, John, you included, you said you had numbers for the two new projects coming on board. If they were not included, what was your estimate of the student population number?
I didn't think we were taking questions.
Okay, all right, fine, so you're not taking questions.
I'm asking the board, I just, I want to know what you want our role to be. I thought that.
I fully support any question anybody has.
What we, what we had discussed was that a public comment was not for back-and-forth dialogue. If, if there are, if there are questions, the community can always contact the administration to find out these answers.
But then, I'm sorry, but it's not fair then for people getting information out to the community.
This is, you know, this is typical board practice, to have dialogue during a board meeting can, you know, we can't pick and choose who we have dialogue with.
I know, but if a community member gets up here and asks for the dialogue, it's, you know, you can't pick and choose, but the community member themselves is, is making that decision to have that dialogue.
We have an answer to Rule.
And you haven't passed a new policy yet.
So if there, if, if you have a list of questions, then you can send that list to, to the administration. You can come back at another board meeting, or you can ask prior to the meeting and come and make your comments with that information in hand, if you would like to say something to the community regarding that.
So you're now going, so now you're going to make a commitment going forward that any email that a community member sends will be responded to on a timely basis and with an answer to the question, because that has not been. Well, that has not been my past experience, so, to date, so I, so that's a new commitment now that the school board and the administration is making, that if a community member sends them a response, an email and wants information, that they will get a response with that information on a timely basis, so then they can make a comment about that information at the next board meeting or when they feel is appropriate.
I would say that depends on when the question was asked. If it's a complicated question that's asked an hour before the meeting, just to, to.
No, but, I mean, but still.
As an example, then, you know, it, it will depend. But yes, we get your point, so I don't, I, we'll give you more time, Judy, because, you know, we've cut in and we've, we've sucked. So, you know, please, you know, continue with your, with your comments. Go, go ahead, yeah.
I also want to know about, with increased numbers exposure to the middle school, there was nothing said about additional teacher or staff. And usually that is discussed even in the first budget discussion, if there are some additional teachers and staff possibly planned for. I'd like to know about the bond, where we are with the budget with the bond, are we over budget, under budget? I'd like to know about, in the bond presentation, to keep it the tax neutral that you called it, it was always said that you estimated that you would get about $7 million from real estate sales. Considering the decline in real estate prices here, are you still considering $7 million as an appropriate number? If not, what is the number that you're thinking you will get now from the real estate sales? You will now use fund balance to make up some of the differences for the bond. What category will these funds come from, from the fund balance? And finally, for the new contracts, when they are negotiated, I would like to request that once those negotiations have been completed and they've been signed, that when you announce that they've been signed, that you will then give the highlights of what the new agreement is about. And the last time these contracts were done, all you did was say that they were signed, and you did not tell the community what you agreed to, what the percentage increases were, what the other benefits were, et cetera. And in the instance of transparency and communication to the community, I feel that we should know after those contracts have been signed, what the new agreements are.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Anybody, anyone else? Okay, so we will move on. We will go to approvals and ratifications. So may I have a motion to accept the minutes of the December 6th and the December 8th board meetings?
I move.
A second? Okay, any questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend 4.1 instructional, as written. I move item 4.1 on instructional personnel. May I have a second? A second? Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as written.
I move item 4.2.
I, I'll second.
Questions? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We have a motion on item 5.1 to approve the CSE summaries reported to the board on January 10th.
I move item 5.1.
I will second 5.1. Any, any comments on that? No?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Item 5.2, may I have a motion to approve a contract with Joe Lombardo Plumbing and Heating for capital improvements at the elementary schools? I will move item 5.2. May I have a second?
A second?
Any questions?
No.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item 5.3, may I have a motion to approve a contract with Dobital Construction for capital improvements at the middle schools?
I so move.
A second?
I just want to say, John, these are all.
I just want to mention, 5.2 and 5.3, these are the contracts the board already awarded. Right now, it's just the paper contracts that has to be approved in, in, in contract.
To the bidding winners, yes.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 We have a motion to approve item 5.4, an agreement for health and welfare services for six students, as stated in the agenda.
I move item 5.4.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's see, I'll take 5.5 and 5.6 together. We have a motion to approve both, which are agreements for health and welfare services for students, one in Irvington and the other in Byram Hills.
Byram Hills is not a health and welfare, I'd say, no.
Oh, correct, you're right. I should have taken the other two together, so strike that. May I have a motion to approve item 5.5, agreement for health and welfare services for one student in, at the Irvington School District?
So moved.
A second? Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item 5.6, contract for educational services with Byram Hills.
I move item 5.6, contract for educational services with Byram Hills High School.
I will second that.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve the terms of a release and settlement agreement as stated in an IHRS case, as stated in the agenda.
I move item 5.7.
I'll second.
All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion on item 5.8, a consent and release agreement with the town of Newcastle regarding the streetscape and infrastructure improvement?
I move item 5.8.
Oh, you know.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Do I have to have a motion to remove that?
To remove the agenda?
No, I, we have to un, remove, we have to untable.
Yes, you have to untable it, sorry.
Okay.
I move that we untable item 5.8.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And now I move item 5.8.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further questions on this?
So we deleted the paragraph that wasn't questioned, and we're all set. I'm just confirming that that was my understanding.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve item 5.9, the terms of a release and settlement agreement involving a particular student, as stated in the agenda.
I move item 5.9.
Are 5.9 and 5.7 the same?
No. Oh, but it's, um.
It's the same student ID number.
Yeah.
I, I wonder if the ID is incorrect on the agenda.
Because there was a second one, right?
I think, I think, it's a different agreement, but it looks like the student, looks like the number.
That's why I'm questioning.
I think we have to table the one that's incorrect.
Let me check.
Because there's no approval.
Do you know which one that is?
Because there would be no proper approval.
Or get the, or get the same ID number for the other one.
Right, but this is giving approval to the board president to sign a certain agreement. And if it's not proper, if it's not, it would then.
I just don't know which one is the correct one.
The second one is the correct number.
Which one?
The second one, 5.9.
Right, but then 5.7 has a, is a different.
Is a different student number.
So may, may I have a motion to, do I have to undo the vote for 5.7?
Rescind.
To rescind and to table.
That's the correct student.
Need a motion to rescind.
I think Lisa's saying 5.9 is the correct student number.
5.9 is the correct student number.
Okay, so then I have no real proper authorization to sign the agreement on 5.7, so I'll have to ask for a motion to rescind approval on item 5.7.
I move rescind approval for item 5.7.
May I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to table item 5.7 till such time as we have a proper student ID. Proper student.
I move, I ta, I move to retable item 5.7.
Okay, I'll second that motion. And I, I just want to say that as soon as we do have the proper ID, that we can, if necessary, convene a special meeting to approve this item, if that should be necessary. Okay, all in favor of tabling item 5.7, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
So go back to item 5.8. Is there a motion, I mean, 5.9, sorry, is there a motion on the table?
I moved 5.9, 5.9, and then I questioned, so.
So Allison moves item 5.9. May I have a second?
I will second. There was no way to amend, to move to, make a correction on the number?
Well, we don't have the information on the, on the proper, correct student number.
I think Lisa has the information, because she knows.
Well, let's vote on this one, and then.
Oh, I thought she said no, that's why I'm like.
I'm looking through the agreement right now, see if it's in there.
It's not in there.
But I don't want to make that decision. I'd like that to be checked. I don't want to.
That's fine, I'm just saying.
Just we vote, we vote on 5.9?
Yeah.
Voting 5.9.
Do we have a second on 5.9?
Jane does.
I'll second 5.9.
Any questions on 5.9? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I prefer not to amend 5.7 on the fly. We, we need to make absolutely sure we have the correct.
Right, if, I'm just saying, if we could corroborate that.
We're looking up right now to see if we can access the student's ID page, so maybe we can continue with the agenda, and if we're able to.
Right.
Okay, okay, it's, there isn't a system right now. Okay, so let's move on to facilities. We have a number of, let me see, change orders. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
You don't need to approve, these are notifications. Superintendent already approved them.
So why, why is this on the agenda?
Because we, well, it's an interesting question, but the reason why I know is because when we approve, when we agree to allow the superintendent to make change orders under $40,000, we request that they be on the next board meeting for notification.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept. Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the notifications in items six point one through six point five. Because I, you know, otherwise, I don't see what, what, what action we would do.
I, I think, I think, I think what, I think probably is you acknowledge the notification.
Can we accept the notification?
Because if you accept, that means you can not accept, right? You, you're being notified and you acknowledge.
At other board meetings, I've watched other districts, they, they.
They acknowledge the notification, that makes sense.
Okay. So, may I have a motion to acknowledge the notifications, given in items six point one through six point five?
I so moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
Yes.
John, do you want to, go ahead.
My question was, and I thought the agreement was that we would be notified at the next board meeting. My looking at the backup, the company signed these things on November sixteenth, and the superintendent signed them on December fourth.
Right.
And we had a board meeting on December sixth. So, why is this not at the December sixth board meeting?
Right, but, but, you know, we put the agenda, I think, if December sixth is a Wednesday, December fourth would be a Monday. And the agenda went out the Friday before. And, you know, we try not to have addendum.
But it's, but especially in the case of a notification, it's irrelevant that it's an addendum, because we don't have to vote on it and we don't have to do the research on it. And, and, and secondly, we've, we've, we have two addendums today. We do it all the time. I believe notification should have happened at the last meeting.
I acknowledge that. No, no, I, I think this is serious business. I'm not trying to make fun, but I, I understand. So, next time, we definitely, if we have one ready before, we do. My understanding is the board is willing to have addendum.
I, I would, I would take the addendum as well, just so that we know. I, I, I agree.
All right, I'm sorry, sorry.
John, do you want to explain the change orders? What that is, just for the, the community to understand what this is all about?
Okay, so, the first one is the, the bell flat roof, the drain line cleaning. They have to have that changed. And the second one is also a drain line, but however, it is at high school. And then the third one is a deck replacement when they were doing the, the roof, milcon. And then number six is that a high school, there's an overhand closure for the roof. And Joe just told me, and, you know, we don't have to worry about this, because we can avoid this. The six point, six point five, we no longer need this change order, because they were able to come in to do it on a snow day, so. So, that, that's one piece that I'm going back to the contractor, but we don't have to worry about that.
Can I add, in the future, the purpose of notification, the purpose of granting the superintendent powers, or whatever the right word is, to make these changes, was because we didn't think we'd necessarily have board timeliness in terms of getting everybody together. That if we're going to sign a change order two days before a board meeting, rather than do an amendment, let's just wait for the board meeting, let us make the approval. I mean, because it seems that it's, it's a move.
I, I agree with you. And Jeff, that's only applied to six point one through six point four. Six point five was a much later, I remember it was right before the, it, it was, you know, very late. That was right around the holiday time, I think.
If we've already passed a policy that you don't need to, we don't need to approve anything unless it's a certain amount.
Forty thousand.
Right. Doesn't need to be noticed, we don't need to get, receive notice at a board meeting. You could just send us an email, right? I mean, this just seems like a colossal waste of time.
Why is this on the agenda, we're accepting.
I, I had to go back to read the language, you know, what form to notify.
You could just notify us that these change orders have been made.
Because I think it, did it say notify at the next board meeting? I'm not, I'm not sure. Let me go back to read that language. Okay, I, I can't recall.
Just send us an email.
So, now that we have a motion to acknowledge, do we vote on acknowledging? It doesn't make any sense.
This all seems very superfluous.
It, I mean, it happens, it happens at the board's board meetings all the time. I'm not saying that's the right standard, but I'm saying that.
Well, I've never seen that done before, but if that's how it's done, then just give me. All in favor of not accepting acknowledging items six point one through six point five? Please say aye.
Aye.
I would like to get a copy of what the agreement was in policy in terms of our notification, because I would like this to be more efficient, I think. It's unclear to me, it's unclear to me, so I'd like to see it.
So, I have received the correct student ID number. So, may I have a motion to take item five point seven off the table?
I put it on the table, I'll take, go ahead.
Okay, so moved.
I thought we took it off the table already.
No, we tabled it.
We tabled it.
Oh, to, to put it back, okay, to take it up, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were.
I will be untabled.
You were untabling it, yes.
May I have a second?
I will second.
All in favor of untabling, please say aye.
Aye.
We're actually removing it from the table.
Removing it from the table, right, we're removing it from the table.
Robert Swirles Award.
Okay, what's the number?
Should we?
What's the student ID?
We have a topical discussion about. Five point seven.
What Robert Swirles Award says.
What's the student ID?
Five point seven.
So, five point seven now.
Yep.
Eight one two.
I'm going, I'm going to. May I have a motion to approve the terms of the release and settlement agreement involving IRS case number six zero one eight one eight one two, as stated in the agenda? And further resolved that the superintendent of schools is authorized to execute such release and settlement agreement.
I move item five point seven as amended.
I second it as amended.
Okay, any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for, thank you, Lisa, for finding the number. Okay, financials. I will take all the financials together. May I have a motion to accept items seven point one through seven point four, which are the treasurer's report, claims auditor's report, appropriation status report, and revenue status report?
I'll move.
A second? I will, okay. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. All, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. That takes us to notice of future meetings. Our next, our next meeting will be Wednesday, January twenty fourth, at seven thirty PM here at the Academic Commons. Do we have a retreat on that day?
We do.
Before the meeting, we'll have, and the board, it's an administrative retreat and mortally the board, right? So, there will be an administrative retreat prior to the board meeting. And the following meeting will be Tuesday, February thirteenth, at the, here at the Academic Commons. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move adjourn the meeting at twenty two twenty six.
A second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.